Natalie's doing one too. Someone scared you.
The important part is, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the fire commissioners for Benita Springs Fire and Rescue to order Monday, July 10th. Please rise.
Let's have a moment of silence for eight firefighters who lost their life in the month of June. God, we come tonight and we give thanks to those that sacrificed for others. Those who've lost their lives, Lord, we pray that you honor them, that you'll be with their families, give them comfort and strength. And as always, Lord, we ask for protection for the firefighters here in Benita and the surrounding area. You might watch over them, keep them safe. Thank you for all they do and all they sacrifice from their families and others so that they can be there to help those in need. And Lord, thank you for our freedom that we just celebrated, our country that we have, and we pray that we always honor the ones that have given their life for our freedom. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment on any agenda items this evening? Seeing none? Get a kind of echo. I need a motion to approve the June 5th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the June 28th, 2023 budget workshop minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One motion for the June 2023 financials. Current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts. And PO over $10,000, which was budgeted for the Cummins Power South Repair Engine 25. We have to change the amount on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the amount for the PO was $27,599.08. The actual amount of the repair of the engine was $35,279.68. And I move that we approve that amount.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that done?
Yes.
Done.
It's back in service, yes.
Fun never ends. Commissioners' business. You want me to call on you individually or anybody would like?
I've got some, but I'll go whenever you want me to, sir.
Commissioner Maturin.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to talk about for a minute with the chief, everybody that's watched the news is familiar with the record heat that we've been having all over the globe, but especially here in southwest Florida, specifically Benita. The high humidity. So my concern has been our firemen overheating in their bunker gear. I had a meeting with the chief. He was very responsive immediately. It's my understanding there's going to be liquid IV with the battalion chiefs now.
Yes, it's currently with the battalion chiefs, both battalion chiefs and both train officers.
So our men and women will have that if they need it. Captain Wilson has it for that. That's fantastic. I talked to the chief a little bit about maybe lowering the standard for training. I believe it's 110 degrees right now.
Correct.
And you did tell me that is a national standard that can't.
Yeah, we're checking on it right now with the Florida State Fire College. I reached out to the southwest Florida Public Safety Academy. They have no number. And we have lowered it back in, I believe it's 2012, we had it at 115 and we've lowered it down to 110 at this point.
Okay. Good news. I don't want any firemen dropping.
And heat index doesn't play into that.
That is the heat index. That is with the heat index. And with our new weather stations that we have here and at Station 2, that's one of the things that they're capable of doing is sending on an alert. So myself and Deputy Chief Schmidt set the alerts for our phones and the battalion chief's phone. So when that heat index hits 110, it's no outside training at that point.
I know you're very concerned about it. You expressed that to me in our meeting and thank you. This past week, it was 102 heat index, 105, and 107. That's... So I'm going to ask two questions to the chief. Have we had any incidents of firemen basically dropping over, getting heat exhaustion that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And has there... Are we running more calls for the public for heat exhaustion, heat stroke?
I'll say a few, but nothing significant that would warrant concern right now. I think everybody's seen it on the news and we have pushed stuff out on social media and with the app to just be cognizant of it. So we've pushed it out too as a social media push out.
Okay. Well, thank you for everything that you're doing. It's appreciated.
And I know we'll bring it up later, but I think you guys all did your due diligence at the Fourth of July parade with throwing water balloons and squirt guns to help keep everybody cool at least that hour, hour and a half that they were around.
Yeah, they were.
You helped the cause out a little bit.
Even you can add so much fun on a fire truck.
Anybody have anything?
Yes, I do. I'd like to specifically point out our Union 34, 44, for the outstanding job they did once again for the parade. They did an enormous job and I think it was one of the biggest crowds we've ever seen. It was spectacular. Better than last year, maybe the best ever. So thank you, guys.
Anybody else? I will reiterate that the, as usual, you know, everybody works hard for that parade. I'd be curious to see between the parade and at night, at the fireworks and laser show, I would say that it probably was the most we've ever had. I mean, I've been to a lot of these as everybody else has, but I've never seen it that crowded on the parade route and at the, what the city did. So everybody deserves kudos for that. Okay, next item, presentations.
Years of service. So we have a couple of five-year ones. I only see a couple of them here right now, three of them here right now, so we'll go with them. Maybe the other two will show up. So first one we have is a couple of five-year ones. The first one's with Ashley Taber. I know Ashley is the administrative assistant for the fire prevention side. So she, a little bit about Ashley, you know, she has her bachelor's degree. She's car seat technician. And I like to call her Ashley 1.0 because we do have Ashley Diaz across the way and she's Ashley 2.0. So, you know, we've got to find out creative ways to talk to them and talk and call their names. But, you know, as we've talked about in the past, you know, Ashley, her evaluation shows great job knowledge, great attitude with the public, great initiative towards everything. One of the things, quote unquote, "I know I can count on her for doing anything I ask." It's a great go-to person and she likes to get things done. And she's helped out Nicole quite a bit. She helps out everybody quite a bit. But let's say with Nicole, because they work in close proximity with each other, she's helped out a lot. And not only does she do it herself, but she, right, wrong, or indifferent, she's pulled her husband into it. He's a photographer by nature. So if she has any questions or issues with doing photography and/or videos, you know, he's jumped in and helped out a few times with some things. And, you know, he's at least taught her some things or gave her some tips. You know, we did the film festival, the independent film festival for the city this past year. You know, between Ashley and Nicole, they've set that whole thing up and did it all. So she is that go-to person. So I'd like to congratulate her on five years. And her real talent is Halloween, so come by during Halloween.
Chief, may I ask her a question?
Yes, of course.
Where did you get your bachelor's degree and what major did you get?
I went to Evangel University in Springfield, Missouri for my bachelor's degree. I got my associate's degree at Edison, at Madison Edison. And my major was in non-hobby business.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next five year is Anna Marie. You know, Anna Marie also has her bachelor's degree. You know, her evaluation says, you know, work quality is great, anticipates what's next, wants to get things completed, doesn't want to wait to that last minute, which.
Plus she's the mother for the board.
Yeah, and that's it. Doesn't want to wait till the last minute. Very, very, very professional. And you guys, for those of you who've been on the board a long time and may have seen email from me prior to five years ago and now, Anna Marie is a big reason why my emails sound a lot better and a lot smarter than they are now. So she take, like, as the chairman said, she takes care of a lot of people. She's, not only does she take care of me and my schedule and help me out with emails and letters and proofread a lot of my stuff. And I've got to, you know, I've got to give her a couple of new boxes of red pins every year because as a trade, she comes to us from the teaching profession. So she was a teacher, so she's got her red pin worn out on me a few times. But also she takes care of the pension. She takes care of all the retirees. So she is that, you know, the glue that holds you guys, us, and the retirees and the pension and the Viva all together. So here's to five years to Anna Marie. And that's... No, I'm joking. I always give Natalie a hard time. So this is Natalie's 10-year pin. Natalie has her bachelor's also and she's also a CPR instructor. She's one of the ones that started, when she got here, that was one of the first things she did was CPR. Those of you that don't know about Natalie, she started out here and she was going to be our PIO because Nicole had been over in the HR department and she was doing the PIO thing. Really didn't... She loved it, but Nicole wanted to do something different. And then the logistics position came available and Natalie jumped at that opportunity in which, you know, at first we were a little bit, eh, do we need it? Do we want it? What are we going to do with it? But from that, you know, right now, we couldn't get along without Natalie. You know, she has taken this logistics position and it's anything from the medical supply to the assets, to the computer program that runs it, to the RFID program when Richie left that he had started. She took that over and has run with it, you know. Some of the words that her supervisor used, extremely knowledgeable, very detail-oriented, organized, great initiative, professional attitude. You know, as you've seen tonight, I gave Commissioner Hugo and Commissioner Murphy their shirts. That's Natalie. Me, I just thrown them on there, but she wants to put them in a bag, staple them, name on it, fold it up, and check it off. So that's the type of person that she is. You know, she does a lot for this place. You know, when she's gone for that week or two weeks on her vacation, we're all scrambling to figure out, all right, who's delivering what and how's it going to get there? So here's the 10 years to Natalie.
So Chief, one more word?
Yes. I don't know if it was 10 or 11 years ago, but Natalie knows this. I was a judge in the parade before I became a commissioner. I was on the cert team. And Natalie showed up. She wasn't even working for us yet. And Chief Dagel was there and he says, "This is probably going to be our next employee." And after watching her for a few minutes, I said, "Chief, I think this one might work out."
Yeah, we sold her for Tico.
So we do one more sign too to put up. Do you want to talk to the manager, the woman that really runs the?
Yeah, exactly.
Congratulations.
Doesn't seem like it's.
The two firefighters that are getting their 15-year pins, it's not their shift, so they are not here. So we will pass on them.
Okay. Congratulations to everybody. Anybody, I'll take a brief recess. If anybody wants to leave, if you want to stay, you're welcome. Same story. So it's up to you. Okay. Old business. Commissioner Murphy.
I don't know if you want me to get into 27 or you have that in your report.
I have it on mine.
Okay, we'll talk about it then.
Okay. If you've got any questions, if I don't cover it, you can ask.
I got something. About two meetings ago, maybe three, but I think it was two meetings ago, we had an issue with Tico not giving us the locations of their shut-offs. I just would like to know where we stand on that. I know you had said that they were going to call you back.
Still haven't called back. I've reached out to them again and with no avail, so.
So what's the next step? Because it's important.
I will reach out to them one more time and get a supervisor's name.
Okay. Thank you. It's happening more and more, you know, these gas line breaks are happening, you know, all around the county a lot more.
Well, we know the chief's busy. If he, not that he needs our help, but if you'd like one of us to get involved and where's their office at?
We've got people that can do that. I mean, that's right.
They have a couple in Fort Myers. They have one down in Naples. They have them regionally. I'll find out and get a supervisor's name.
Because I'd be happy to drive up there and talk to somebody.
It's just a concern that we, you know, we should know, they should know.
They should know.
And, you know, God forbid, you know, what can go wrong when you hit one of those lines? So and I think that it's a major safety concern, not for us, but for the rest of the county. Everywhere they run, you know, I'm sure if it's an issue for us, it's an issue for them too. So I just think that it should be addressed.
Two months is too long.
Yeah.
I'll bet you if you didn't pay your bill for two months, they'd know where the shut-off was, right? Just saying. New business. We have to set the tentative millage at this meeting. Did Lisa or you want to?
Now, as discussed in the budget workshop on June 28th, I think the commission and myself feel that the current millage rate is where we need to be.
Well, I just wanted to put that on the record. So are we okay with?
Could you state the amount, please?
It is 1.9466 mils.
And basically, just for the record, this millage rate can come down from there, but this is a not to exceed number and so we have to have that as part of the process. So we need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for reiteration, if something happened, you know, last year we'd set the millage rate, then Hurricane Ivan or Ian hit and, you know, we were locked into it. So as Commissioner said, we've just locked it in at 194. If something crazy were to happen, we do technically have till August 9th. We just have to advertise, convene another meeting if we ever wanted to raise it between now and when the trim notices have to go out.
Chairman, is that a meeting for us on the 20?
28th.
20?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that's at what time?
3 o'clock?
3 o'clock.
We'll send out a reminder.
Okay.
Now, Chief's report.
Chief's report. I have just a few items on there. Again, Business After Hours is coming up this month. It's July 13th from 4 to 6 through the Southwest Florida Inc. It's at Millennial Brewing in downtown Fort Myers. As a rule, you guys usually don't go to that, but just putting it out there, it's this Thursday from 4 to 6 down in, or up in Fort Myers, at Millennial Brewing. I just wanted to give everybody a quick budget update. As you know, the numbers came in on, what was it, Wednesday last week or Monday of last week? I sent it out and it was at 3.19. With that form, they put out what the rollback rate was. Someone had brought it up to the Department of Revenue and to Matt Caldwell, our property appraiser, that the numbers were incorrect and it's just the rollback numbers is what they believe is incorrect. They are looking into it, but it shouldn't affect us at all. We're hoping. I do want to reiterate what Chairman Lohan said about the parade and the festivities on the Fourth of July. The union did a great job. They did super. You know, everybody did super, from the crews on duty to before and after, you know, putting up the tent, taking down the tent, doing all the legwork. So, you know, it's, I don't want to steal Sheriff Carmine's theme, but it's, you know, one team here, you know, between the union administration on something like that. You know, the parade is for the community. It's not for the union. It's not for the fire department. It's for the community. Then the festivities afterwards, again, went off without a hitch. City had a little issue with the fireworks, but that's being worked out and no avail to us. And to Chairman Lohan's question, we got a letter from Laura Taylor the next day and their estimations were somewhere in the 20,000 persons.
Wow.
So I have not reached, I reached back out to her and I haven't got a reply yet. Is that all day or is that just their end of it? But I, in running up and down the parade route on the Fourth of July, and I went all the way up to Nelson's Old Plaza and all the way down to Station 1 and it was full both sides, so.
Even at the last traffic circle, there were 30 deep. Usually there's nobody there.
Yeah, exactly. And again, I think the city stated this, the first city council made a comment that they wanted to have a parking problem downtown, you know, between the parade and the festivities down there. I think they've got it and I think they're doing a great job. My last thing, Station 27. Station 27 keeps moving forward, waiting on two quotes, actually three quotes, two from two dock repair shops that are going to do the repairs on the dock. Not so much ours, but the docks themselves on the, be the north side of the docks got damaged a little bit and also out where the gas pump was, there's a floating dock out there that was damaged. Doesn't affect our operation. It's just one of those things, before we put it on the market and start to sell it, we would like to get it repaired. And also waiting on the gas pump to get repaired and a quote from that. Both of those, I've been in contact with Wiesen, which is the West Coast Inland Navigational people. They do grants. They're the one that did a grant, a 50-50 grant with our boat back in the day. And actually, we have a 50-50 grant for new motors for the boat that are, should be coming in this week. My point being is I reached out to them at the FASD conference and talked to their director, Justin McBride. They have money that has been allocated to them through the state to do a full, it's not a 50-50 grant, it's paid for. I've reached out to him. He says it sounds like something they can do. So as soon as I get the estimates, I'll be forwarded to the Wiesen and we'll see what we can get from them if not.
Chief, State Station 27, in terms of the house itself, is there a lot of work to be done?
The work is probably, I would say, 80% done right now. All the final electric is done, the final alarm panel, sprinkler system, AC is completed. We're waiting on the tile in the bathroom and the cabinets just arrived today.
Do you have an estimate at when it might be operational?
Our goal is August 1st.
August 1st. Thank you very much.
Do we have, have you addressed the parking issue down there?
We've addressed it many times.
I know that.
But it still continues holiday weekends. It seems to be a problem. Normal weekends, not a problem.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Great job.
Two comments. Number one, we had some great announcers at the parade route. There were two of you, I believe.
Yes.
And it was outstanding. Very nice work. Going back to the parking lot, I went out there on the Fourth of July, as you know, and I looked around and it seemed like somebody was running a business in our lot. I have pictures of vehicles being parked there, including trailers, against other cars, which was indicative of somebody managing it. I think for our sake, we need to cut our liabilities in a hurry because if somebody gets hurt there, somebody gets run into, we've got to put a proper barricades and proper no trespassing signs that people cannot access that property, whether it be a holiday or a given Sunday or maybe every week. Who knows how often they're doing this if they started that day? So I would ask that we give that some media attention.
Has anybody been using the docks?
No, I haven't seen one boat out on the docks. So what we'll do this week, we will get, we'll get some signage out there.
Yeah.
We haven't put any signs. We've just kept using either buckets and fire line tape and they've torn those down or they've done that. So we will get some proper signage.
Would it be a big cost to put a temporary fence around it?
I don't think it'd be a big cost, but I think it would be, the issue would be between now and August 1st. We're truly back in in August 1st.
You wouldn't even get it done in time.
Yeah.
But, you know, Commissioner Murphy's spot on about the liability issues. You know, people can sue you for anything.
Yeah.
And the fact that they're illegally using our property has nothing, no bearing on the fact if somebody gets hurt or falls in or there's a hole out there and they fall in, it's still going to be on us.
So what we'll do is we'll get some signage. I'm sure there's a local towing company that has signage that says if you park here that you will be towed and I'm sure that they'll be more than happy.
Maybe we can kind of deal with them to just park one of their trucks there on the weekends.
GNC could do that, right?
Yeah.
They could.
Yeah, we can contract with GNC, who's the local company who we use. And they've been good to us with giving us cars and donating us cars. So we can get with them and, you know, and we've already got with Lee County Sheriff's. They did on the week after Memorial Day, they were writing tickets. And the week of Memorial Day, they were writing tickets for illegally parked cars.
One more thing, even though we have blocked the access to our parking with buckets and string right next door to us and into our lot, it's open access. There's nothing to prevent people from coming right into our lot through the driving lot next door to us.
No, we'll block that one off too. That's the one that, the one that connects us with the condo next door. Had a fire line tape across it and they broke that down. The front parking lot, we had buckets and stuff there for the workers so they could move those going in and out, but somebody's took the other one down. So we will.
I don't know why I didn't think of running a business out of that a lot sooner. Thank you.
We've kind of talked to the union or the off-duty firefighters, say, $20 a parking spot. You guys figure it out.
Thank you.
And I think that is all I have right now.
Thank you. And thank you for the rest of the reports that we have in our pack. Thank you, gentlemen. Alex, you're up.
Alex Grant, former advanced volunteer here. In my capacity as a former PASMAT advisor, I have some information on ethylene oxide. You know, the story of one Wink News about 10 days ago, people complaining about ethylene oxide coming out of some place on Pagefield. And I've got information on that to you. Also, I have information about EPA and the, what they call perfluorocyanic acid and perfluorosulfonic acid for firefighting foam. That's for you too. And I've made copies for the chiefs of the South Trail and City of Fort Myers Fired Department, if you would kindly give that to them. The next item, I don't know if you watch on the, what is it, Channel 20? The NBC program on Tuesday night at 8 o'clock from Los Angeles Fire Department. Excellent program. Excellent. I recommend that highly to any of you and any firefighters, you know, put that on you. They had also something interesting on the first one, on the CPA.
Talk into the microphone.
On the CPA, they had this automatic, what is it?
Diffusator?
Not diffusator.
Automatic compression device.
Thing that you.
CPR.
You, what, you pump the chest. It does it for you. You don't have to do, you know, I don't know if you've seen, I don't know how much that costs or anything. Do you guys have that?
We don't have one. We have.
You don't have, well, I mean, we have one in the Biden's.
Well, I mean, we have one in the project for this shit.
Okay. And a final thing, the Oppenheimer movie about atomic... I'd recommend everybody to see that. They had an excellent program last night on TV, you know, because we have a couple lunatics.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.